So every other.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Since I have a question about this, I don't know how far you are along.
No, we're just waiting for the meeting.
We haven't started here.
We're giving you the courtesy of being getting here, so.
Thank you. Thank you, because I stopped to print out the information that can sometimes.
We haven't amended the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Otherwise, yes.
Right, so I stopped up. Um, so I.
We have not started the meeting yet.
We haven't started the meeting.
No, we're waiting on you.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
We're waiting on that.
Okay. You were teasing me.
No, I was serious. I was waiting on you.
Okay, so Commissioner Lori canceled the meeting because it has not begun.
Right.
All right, thanks.
All right, we can always adjourn for you. Yes. Um, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna open up a special meeting. The date is November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. The time is approximately one thirty-six. Um, with that, Commissioner Lori, may I ask you if you would, since this is our invocation, stand if you are able?
Let's bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, once again, we want to thank you for your grace and mercy. We thank you for waking us up this morning to this brand new day, one we've never seen before and we will see again. But we thank you for this is the day that we are made and we will rejoice. And we thank you for allowing us to come together one more time and we ask you to be within the best. Help us to do those things that are pleasing in your sight and be able to help those that are in need. And Father God, we ask you to be with us in this meeting, in this special meeting, and help us to do those things that would be pleasing. We ask you, be with us, help us all, and bless this city, bless our state and our country, okay? And we will forever praise you and give you the highest praise. In all these blessings, we do ask in our sin, Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the Constitution, and to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Clerk, if you would, please do a roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Cynthia Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Linda Moore?
Here.
Commissioner William Laurie?
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Cane DeVito?
Present.
City Manager Derek Martin?
Here.
Finance Director Steve Complon?
Here.
Mayor Myers?
Uh, present.
Okay. With that, we are going to go ahead and get started. So we are here today to get caught up. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for bringing us to this point. Um, we've had some changes in personnel and duties. And um, I know that that's kind of been some of the confusion because we had an assistant clerk that was handling the minutes and then in her departure, some of that has been lost, some of it. And so this just brings it up and Madam Clerk, we thank you for that. Um, and I believe this is using our new system, correct? A lot of it is part of.
Mayor, if I may address, address the potential analogies?
Yes, ma'am.
I took it upon myself to rerun everything through the Soniclear Minutes. Um, having done that, I've noticed that the Soniclear transcription, I had to re-educate myself. Those minutes were run through the system incorrectly. Therefore, that's why I have noticed that there's roll call and certain things missing. The minutes that I provided the Commission were not proofreading.
Okay. Okay, you just got this out to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, well, I have to say that going through these and reading and read, they're concise and they are seem to appear to be an accurate record of what's taking place. Of course, some of this, the time factor has played in and it's, you know, it's what our recollection is based on the actual, the actual record. So with that, Commissioners, do we have yet to try and follow up on your remarks?
Um, I agree with you. I think that um, minutes are very well organized and in many respects, they're very easy to read. Um, but um, as I read through them, I had very clear recollection of what we did and what happened before and the August fifth meeting that we took, where we approved a good number of these minutes. And I counted this up and I sent it to the city manager. Um, the minutes that were redone have many of the problems that they did before. They are, in many respects, still not accurate. And what um, what I'm not sure about is, number one, we approved those minutes. The Commission, the Commission voted on those minutes and with changes. We did that on August fifth for minutes that I believe.
For July tenth. It was a July tenth meeting that we had before us on the August, at that August meeting that we approved, correct?
No, uh, at um, hold on. At, on August fifth, we had a special meeting to approve the minutes. This is what I, um, this is what was on the agenda for the August fifth meeting. Was February twenty-fifth through, I believe, June twelfth. And we approved those with changes. And I found the changes that I wrote for two of the meetings, but they were the changes that we all arrived at. Then, on, I don't have a list for this. Then, on August twelfth, the Commission approved the regular CRA minutes for July tenth. That is what we did. So, we have approved through July tenth. So, to me.
So you're saying that Aug- August fifth, at the special meeting, we approved all the minutes?
Because through June twelfth, there should be a tape of the August fifth. Okay, here's the agenda that was published for the August fifth meeting. It was a special meeting just for minutes. And it goes through, um, the minutes were divided up into two groups. Uh, regular, done in regular fashion through May twenty-seventh. And then, uh, two sets of Soniclear transcription minutes, June eleventh, then June twelfth. Because as you know, we had quite a few meetings. So, there should be a tape from the August fifth meeting in which we all, wasn't just my changes.
We went through it.
Some of my changes were accepted, some weren't. There were revisions, you know, Commissioners had ways to shorten up, um, some of the things that we've thought about. So, um, to me, either, either we go through these again and do them again. And to me, if, if we're gonna do that, wouldn't we have to rescind our form of approval? Because we haven't.
No, I think the quickest way to do this would be go back to the, uh, record and see if that actually did indeed.
Would you?
Oh, and it should have been taped.
It's not, it's not indicated in the August fifth special meeting. So, those minutes, it's not indicated in that.
That we, that we actually.
What?
And those are the. The August.
And I noticed that and I think that's, that was something else I had a question about. But I remember reading here.
Sorry, I went through.
And going through it, um, and unfortunately, many of the changes that we made are still not here. And.
Yeah.
Well, I don't wanna go back through all these. I'm gonna tell you right now.
Right, this is the agenda.
But, I mean.
And it was February twenty-fifth through May twenty-seventh, and then also June eleventh and June twelfth.
Okay.
Right. And I worked that to the city manager yesterday.
Okay, so if that's the case, well, it's not, it obviously was not, it's not on the August fifth agenda.
And I had a question about that. You mean in, in the minutes and our work today?
The minutes that we have, the minutes that we have in front of us. Again, but like I said, like I explained at the beginning, is we had a change in staff. And it's my understanding that with that change, we're not, we, we're uncertain where those went. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay. But Mayor, if I could, we cannot possibly be uncertain as to where the YouTube went of the August fifth meeting, where we sat together and we would.
That's not what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. So before we.
I'm sorry.
Go over the fence of, what I'm saying is, is that we explained at the beginning, we had an assistant clerk who was handling the minutes. A lot of this stuff happened when, um, our current, our, our current clerk was going through some personal issues, um, with her, with her mother. And, and so Nancy stepped in, took that over. When Nancy departed, she was the assistant clerk. When she departed, it's my understanding that a lot of that information, a lot of those notes, and I guess, did you do it handwritten? How did you trans, how did you give those notes?
Okay.
That you took?
I know exactly how I did it.
How did you do it?
So, for February twenty-fifth and March thirteenth, I wrote them out, um, I typed them out, page in line.
Okay.
And I emailed those to the city manager. Then for the balance of them through June, I think it was twelve, Commissioner Lori? Okay, I handwrote those and I made copies and I gave them in his office to the city manager.
Okay.
And then those were, I believe, distributed to everybody because at the August fifth meeting, which is on YouTube, we all sat together and Commissioner Lori, you had his changes, you had some of yours, you're very.
Okay, shorten.
We, and somewhere I have a copy of those, but all of that is on August fifth YouTube. It's got all of your changes.
Well, all of everybody's changes. So I want to, I'm, we're gonna take care of this right now. Uh, I just wanna make sure, um, Commissioner Lori, can you pull up that YouTube meeting? It should be right there at the very beginning. And if that's the case, then those minutes, um, then we would just have to, we would go back and correct them based on that. And if they've already been approved and we can take them off of the agenda today.
Yep.
Thanks.
Because we love it.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure we did. That was, I, I kind of go through it.
Well, I know we, they've come up several times.
Yeah, and, and looking through these, I'm thinking, we probably approved most of these.
And I do not have to say that Nancy leaving, there was just, so, in this.
The data in the folders wasn't correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had some issues.
The data that was in folders, some of it was incorrect or, well, couldn't find certain things.
This was also budgeting, too.
Yeah, it was a budget.
Wait a minute, did we, um, by the, did we have two separate meetings? Did we have a budget workshop after?
I'm trying to figure that out. This is, this is two hours and forty minutes, so I wonder if that was.
It should be, because if we're gonna do minutes, it's gonna be in, it's gonna be in the beginning.
Yeah.
It's in the agenda, the agenda you showed, showed it in, yeah.
Well, it was scheduled for twelve noon and it was advertised as a special meeting on the minutes. So what I'm wondering about, did we have, um, a budget workshop after that? This is a special meeting, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was trying to hear.
Well, this is budgeting, this is talking about budget.
And how far in is that?
I'm just, I'm just stopping up. So this is the first seven minutes. Who was saying, fresh, it first one? What was the other? Uh, remember, it must have been something.
So what, what's happened to it?
Uh, it, it, my, I'm trying to find it. Has that not always been a special order?
Um, so I have on my schedule for that day, a ten o'clock, um.
Budget meeting.
Budget. And then.
That's a special, sure.
And then nothing else after that.
Well, we had a notice meeting for noon, the seven minutes. And I, I think we didn't get out of there for quite a while. Maybe Commissioner Burton had to leave, or is that?
She did.
Actually. I think she had, um, and.
Yes, she left.
I know that there were certain concessions made for exact language that was used, that was approved, but the Soniclear program does summarize all of those, um, all of the languages used. And I believe there were some small things that needed to be added as far as roll call or maybe a last name, but if we.
Well, they weren't small. They weren't small. There was whole sections that were permitted.
Okay, so this one, it says we adjourned at twelve forty-five PM on that day. So that was almost a three-hour meeting.
Yeah, that's what's turned on, but.
And that's what it was showing.
I was looking at, I don't see the other recording. That doesn't need to stop here. But if you were getting with, uh.
The fifth.
Special service.
And so you don't see anything else for that day?
We're back. Oh, my schedule, I just saw a bunch of things.
Um, I do see on, uh, the August twelfth, our meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna bring it over to August twelfth.
And there was a move to approve to July tenth, twenty twenty-five minutes, as demanded in that past. But I'm going here. That's what I just, but we have a notice meeting for twelve noon on August fifth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a record of that being, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sure we went through that.
No, we, we did have a meeting in minutes, I know that. Spent quite a lot of time.
Right, and my recollection is, is that both the clerk and the assistant to the clerk were there. I thought, I don't know, maybe not.
Now, on July thirty-first, if you look at July thirty-first, it looks like we had, um, a one o'clock and four o'clock.
Okay. And are those in our, no click here?
They're in my calendar, so that's what I'm checking right now. I'm looking in, I'm looking in my book right now, I'll see what we have on that.
Okay.
So we have July, it's twenty-first. That's July thirty-first. There is the one that came at that one o'clock. And then, uh, that one ended at four o'clock. Noting a special meeting would immediately follow to set the tentative millage rate in that meeting.
What's the date that you're seeing that?
Um, on the thirty-first, we had a workshop and then we had a special meeting at four for the millage. That was, should have been for the millage on like the July.
July. So on, on our, uh, on our August twelfth meeting, we approved the minutes for the July tenth, the July tenth meeting, or minutes, on, on our, on our August twelfth meeting.
Right. Right.
And so I think, of, of course, before that, we had gone up to that meeting, um.
Well, we kept moving on.
Right.
We kept deferring them, tabling them, um, and that's why they were, they, I mean, they were building it, they had built that.
Mm-hmm.
You don't see anything?
Ooh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, is there five, was there any sort of dates on it? It's on, unless it's in the title. But we do now, but I think back. It was on. Which one's that page, twenty page?
Well, then I think what we can do at this point, since there's some discrepancy here and we're not sure that, um, if we need to, that any, anything for, um, this would be, um, I don't know how we would want to go about doing this, if you wanna make a motion to, um, to reassess, to set aside the original motion to approve, and we're going to re-review these and then approve them, um, in full. Um, we can do that, or anything that had been approved prior to that date. We can do a motion for that, then go through them, um, otherwise, I don't know. I think a lot of that has been, has possibly been lost. Um, you know, Commissioner DeVito, if you come up with your changes later, if you find the changes that you had and you want to bring them to the Commission at a later date, we can ask those to be added to the original minutes that were approved. We can go about it that way.
Well, and I was, I wasn't the only one, but.
I, I understand.
Right.
But I'm satisfied with the way the minutes are presented.
Okay, well, if we, if we go through them today, I have gone through and found things that need to be corrected. I think some of the original corrections that we made are still needing to be made, even after Soniclear. And that is also true for, um, the July tenth meeting minutes. Um, I have, um, some of the corrections and additions that, that I had then and they, they still aren't there. There's part from the planning program or presentation was made and that just didn't get in the minutes. I don't know why.
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah.
My recollection of that is, um, Commissioner DeVito is correct. She, she gave, um, changes, but those changes were never made. That was the transition.
That was the transition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Those items are missing.
Okay. So they were never updated?
No, ma'am, they were never.
They were, they were never corrected in the actual minutes that were before us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I would agree with that. Right, okay. So Mayor, you're saying you want us to, um, to revisit our, whatever original approval we did of February twenty-fifth through June twelfth and go back through them?
Um, yeah, well, I, I wanna say this as we start this out, is, um, if you're making substantive changes to these without the entire Commission having an opportunity to, to read, listen to, uh, these are, uh, these are pretty factual and without he said, she said, this added, this added, um, because again, we've talked about this in the past, that it needs to be an accurate record of what took place. And, and when we start adding, well, I said this, she said this, then we have to be very careful that that is in fact how it was actually stated.
Okay.
Um, and so I don't wanna get caught in, I don't wanna get lost in the weeds here today. I say that, you know, I would like to limit this to, um, no more than an hour, um, and, and if we can get through that at that point. But before we do anything, we're going to have to come a motion to rescind any prior, any prior approvals in a, um, request to re-review all minutes that were before us.
Well, my premise would be to further research it because I think, and Commissioner Lori, do you think that we actually did the corrections to those sets of minutes?
That we have a meeting, yes. And we.
We just need to find where it is.
But it was all, all was about here. And Nancy was here and.
There should be a tape.
And there might be, I'm just, I, I can't find it right now on there. But, but it, we need to send the minutes to.
If not, we're gonna be in the same situation we, we are in and will be in January, still looking at the minutes. And so the clerk has requested of us, before she leaves office, before she leaves her office, that she would like to be able to have these all cleaned up and I start fresh at our next meeting um, with, with whomever it is that is, that is gonna be in place and taking the minutes. So that there's not that burden placed on that next person to come in and try to interpret what we have, what we thought needed to be in these minutes.
And that's what happened to me when she first got here. She walked into.
Trying to catch up.
First one, she was, she weren't being the first station.
So she knows what that's like. So I think we have, we have that responsibility and minutes don't have to be that difficult. And we make them so di, so difficult.
Yeah, I do not have.
It, it really, they really don't. We go through this, I've been doing this for five years now, and every meeting, minutes are difficult and we'll spend forty-five minutes on, on minutes. And I go to other meetings and minutes, you know, it's, it's, it's not that case. So I think we, here at the Commission, we have a new system here and I tell you, I love the way they are doing these minutes. It's the best our minutes have ever been. Okay, before I was, before I was sitting here, um, even in the audience, I think this is a great opportunity we have. These fall into that pattern, so anybody looking back on them, um, but Commissioners, you know, it's, it's, it's your call. So, um, I'm giving you my recommendation.
All right. Um, there are still with Soniclear, significant problems with minutes. It's not that we make them difficult. For example, uh, motion and second, not there. We can't have.
Well, she said that. They have to, regardless, you still have to prove these.
Right.
They still have to be proved and the, and the clerk just said that.
Yes.
She handed these to us as a, trying to get them to us because they were, there was a lot of volume here. And that they had not been approved, um, and so that's part of it, but that's an easy fix. These were the motions, so.
Okay, well, my feeling.
You know, really, minutes are the A's and A's. You know, it's really, what, what did you vote on? Okay?
Okay.
And that's the problem. They don't always say accurately what we have voted on. And as a Commission, uh, I hope in the future that we are not in the position of proofreading minutes. But I will make a motion that we rescind.
You know what? We always will proofread minutes. We will always proofread minutes because you should never, you should never recommend an approval unless you've had a chance to look it over. It's what we act to these minutes.
No, Mayor, we are in the position tonight, yes, I always read the minutes and I'm criticized for proofreading them. The things I've read up frequently are names are not there, names are misspelled, people who attended the meeting are not there. That is not making the minutes more difficult.
I'm gonna move, let's move on. I'm trying to make a motion, okay.
Yes, but also, I don't think we should be sitting here criticizing ourselves for essentially things that should be in the minutes when they come to us. So, um, I move that this Commission rescind our prior approvals for the meetings, special meeting, February twenty-fifth, Commission meeting, regular meeting, March thirteenth. And these are all twenty twenty-five. Special meeting, City Commission, March twenty-first. Special meeting, City Commission, March twenty-eighth. Special meeting, City Commission, April eighth. City Commission, regular CRA meeting, April tenth. Special meeting, City Commission, April twenty-first. Special meeting, City Commission, April twenty-second. City Commission, regular meeting, May eighth. City Commission Workshop, May nineteenth. Special meeting, City Commission, May twenty-seventh. And Soniclear transcription minutes for City Commission Workshop, June eleventh. City Commission, regular meeting, June twelfth. All those, both on them. That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a proper motion and a second. Commissioners, do we have any further discussion on this? If none, Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call?
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lori?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye. Okay, so let's move on. Um, so what you have before you, um, is from February twenty-fifth, um, forward. And we're gonna go through the August, and it goes through. and we're going to go through the August, and it goes through September twenty fifth, for that last, to that last special meeting that we have. As you've gone through these, does anybody have any changes that are?
Yes, I do, um, I do not have anything for February the twenty fifth.
Okay, does anybody have anything for February twenty fifth?
No.
Okay, let's go to March thirteenth. Um, and before we go forward, Madam Clerk, have you found anything in these minutes that you have already corrected?
Yes, ma'am. March thirteenth, I got a roll call. That's missing.
Roll call is in my, wait, wait, roll call is in my copy. I mean, we don't have to approve what's in front of us with changes.
I know, I just, Madam Clerk. Commissioner DeVito answered, she's found any changes that need to be made, that she needs, that need to be made before we go through these, that she's already found in her, in her proofreading case.
Okay, but she said roll call is missing, the roll call is there.
Some of the, um, the motions, who made the motion, those were missing, I have since corrected those.
Okay, but that's not in front of us, so.
Okay, Melanie, do you have those, do you have any of those that you changed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, could you give us?
Could you give us the changes, please, if you've got those before you? I know we've got ordinance twenty twenty five oh one and ordinance twenty twenty five oh two, and it doesn't have who made the motions on either one of those.
Ordinance twenty twenty five oh one, a motion was made by Commissioner Burton, seconded.
Commissioner Laurie.
Unanimously approved.
Okay.
Ordinance twenty twenty five oh two, motion made by Commissioner Laurie, seconded, Commissioner Burton. Unanimously approved.
So the next meeting was, I mean, the next ordinance twenty twenty five oh two, that was Commissioner Laurie and Commissioner Burton?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner, and seconded.
Twenty twenty five oh five.
Commissioner Burton, seconded, Commissioner Laurie. Unanimously approved. Ordinance twenty five oh six.
Is the table in there?
The facilities.
There's a virtual table.
There's a table, Commissioner DeVito, seconded by Laurie. And we tabled that till April tenth.
Or is it approved by the state? And that was unanimously approved.
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty twenty five oh seven?
Commissioner Laurie made the motion, Commissioner Moore seconded. Commissioner DeVito opposed.
Right, this is twenty twenty five oh seven?
Yes.
Okay, and. Okay, on the first bullet, I have no idea what I asked for the first time, but it says Commissioner DeVito expressed concern about piecemeal amendments, should be piecemeal amendments to the budget.
To the, it should be to the amended budget, because it wasn't to the budget, this was to the budget amendment.
Well.
So it should have been to the amended budget.
No, what I meant was piecemeal, just take out the word amendments, piecemeal changes to the budget.
To the amended budget.
But that's, she was concerned about making piecemeal amendments. It's not changes.
The law, so if we could on that first bullet, take out at the end of the first bullet amendments, say it changes to the budget.
Did you say amendments, or did you say changes?
Changes.
Changes.
Basically, changing the budget in.
To any, I think you need to say to any given budget.
Exactly. Did I say yes, or did I say, hey, no, I'm just kidding, okay, aye. Did I say no, did I say day?
I mean, business items.
Rick Murray.
And good on you, Commissioner.
Okay, so.
Do you have that, no?
Commissioner Laurie, yes, seconded, Commissioner Burton unanimously approved. And also, um, backing up, we have a resolution of Oasis, presently. Motion made by Commissioner Burton.
What did I?
Says a die for lack of a second.
Correct.
Okay, so I have a question about that item. Okay, under discussion, um, I think this was the first time this item came up? I don't know, um, there was one time the item came up that Commissioner Laurie had concerns about it. Was this that?
This was the first time it came up.
Okay, because the bullet, to me, is not accurate, about whatever it was that Commissioner Laurie said. He said it expressed disappointment at the lack of support for potential economic growth. I don't think that's what she said, then. And I think that you had concerns about the proposal.
Yes.
I don't think this is what she said. Do you want to suggest a change for what she said?
Definitely, you know, take out that, um, I just, I think I expressed concern, almost what it says for Commissioner DeVito, I expressed concern about the potential developments and environmental impacts. That would be the dot. Because I definitely don't express disappointment about the lack of support potential. I can refer.
But I remember the first time it came up.
Yeah.
But that's the first time it came up, so let's.
Okay, and there, also, if we could go back one more page. Um, ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty, twenty twenty five oh six tabled. Um, it just says the ordinance, it doesn't say what the ordinance was. This was the comp plan amendment regarding our, the water level, the water supply level, was that correct?
Yes.
Uh, yes, it was, yes.
Um, I think that would be helpful.
So just put the title, just put the title of, title, include the title, okay? Okay, let's move on.
And also Mr. Corret's name.
Right. Okay.
I mean, as far as those being present, because he's not listed as present.
It's his, how his name's spelled.
I'm sorry, on the first page, under the twenty twenty five oh one, it says the address is two oh one North Central Summit Street. Very first bear around.
Oh, yes.
Those are those little things.
Yeah, I mean, just, just take out the central.
Thank you.
Another, the business items number four. Professors of men, it says the officials attending their Marjorie Nelson part. And Margaret, Margaret Nelson.
Marjorie.
Yeah.
M A R G, I have that in mind.
Okay.
Um, also, I see, I see a train for council operations, where it says participate jointly. Um.
That, you made that recommendation?
Well, basically, the recommendation was that we all sign up so that we could get the, um, discount.
Okay, so suggesting all commissioners participate jointly out, how's that?
Um, yes, but it was to, to get the B discount, that was it, well, that was the reason I said it, and that's what I said.
Okay, let's go to the, the next page with the motion on the, um.
Christine Marie.
Christine Marie.
Do you know who made the second up?
That's needed, I think.
Can you see her, no?
I'm sorry.
It's number five on the, on the business under, it says city manager resignation, and then underneath that, there was a motion to appoint Christina Marie, that's where Michael had made the recommendation for Christina Marie to step in as interim city manager.
And just the motions made second.
That means be careful.
We can add that when she, when she had a chance to research that.
And the only other thing I see is under German, Eric Murray's name is spoken.
There's another one, um, down under legal services contract, the motion. Um, there's not a second, it's whoever it was, DeVito maybe, um, made, um, moved approval with modification, but who seconded it, so we're going to have to find that.
Okay.
Okay, do we have anything else with that, and we'll move on to the next one? We're going to give a that, let's move on to March twenty first, twenty twenty five.
Okay, under city manager compensation.
Yeah, which was city manager.
Right, just figure out what this says.
This is where we gave her, um, uh, to be paid for at the end of the month, this is where she was given the additional compensation as the interim city manager. We bumped up her pay from where she was.
Well, I'd say so.
Yes, but.
So it's moved to provide an increase in the form of supplemental payment to be paid, well, to pay for at the end of the month, effective March, during, and it should be during the time she is serving as assistant city manager.
Okay, we just have to make sure that that's in fact what the motion said.
I mean, sure, it did, well, because that's just what it was for, and it doesn't make sure that how the motion read.
So we check on that. And so that it reads as it, as it was stated?
Well, we have a lot of questions here that don't read as they're stated, they just say this is the title of the motion.
Well, then what do you want to change it to, go ahead, how do you want to change it?
It should reflect at the end, where there's a period, put a comma, and says during the time she is serving as assistant city manager, because otherwise it's not clear really what the difference.
Interim city manager.
Or interim city manager.
During times interim city manager, okay. Okay, what else do you have in March twenty first?
Um, in number six, where it talks about the general fund carryover balance, public works lending, um, was Commissioner Laurie moved to allocate twenty-five thousand to public works? This was, I guess that was out of the balance of a hundred and seventy-three thousand oh one oh. Okay, to, should it have sent what it was for?
No.
Or just, it just wanted to public works?
Just public works.
Okay, so that is accurate, um. Then on number seven, seven, um, tree clearing project, um, allow Ford Gas Utility to manage and perform the tree clearing project, um, was there a payment involved in that?
No, I don't believe so.
Not at the time, it worked?
Not at the time.
That was just to get it to afford.
Right, but at some point, we had to pay for it, that was, I think that was at another time, another point in time. Because at that point, I don't even know if we knew how much it was an actual cost.
Okay.
That's when it came to cost.
And then how, and the options that we had in front of us. Okay. The only other thing I see, Madam Clerk, is at the very end, you might want to move over the signature, the signature line a little bit.
Okay.
Let's move on to March twenty eighth.
I have from on the, or bottom of the first page, it says presenters for Forbes and Jen Handsome.
Oh, yes.
Former advisors. Senior advisors from the Florida City Manager, actually, it says right up there, F C, so just senior advisors, F C, C M A.
You put that after their, after their names, that's their title.
Yeah.
Okay. Correct.
Senior advisors, and then also, um, my note is it says out of seventeen applicants, the following six were recommended, and that was recommended, and afterward recommended, we should say to be interviewed, because that, that's what we were doing.
Okay, to be interviewed. Okay. Let's go to the next page.
Um, but I have one thing on the next page, may I?
Say yes.
Okay, under, about three quarters of the way down the page, under additional motion, the bullet says Commissioner DeVito motioned, it should be moved, not motioned.
Um, and that, the only other thing I would say in that one is, um, that we do not livestream that meeting to the public in general, I would take out in general, it's just that we do not livestream that meeting to the public, and that public attendance would be in person. Just take out in general. Hey, do we have any other changes?
Um, on the next page, somehow, oh, when we had a discussion, we used the Department of Corrections inmate work groups, um, so my, so we did not vote on that, is that correct? Okay, no vote, all right.
Okay, anything else? If nothing, we're going to move on to April eighth. That was when we started, um, these events, yeah.
Right, let me go back to one thing, this last page, where the commission action, and it says motion, DeVito moved to interview candidates, seconded by Laurie, and the vote, I, you know, I voted nay, and it looks kind of like odd, why would I vote nay when everybody else voted yea? And I wouldn't mind the reason for that put there. And the reason for that was because I wanted Christina Marie.
You wanted Christina.
Marie, um, I asked for her to have.
So rather than put it with your vote, because we don't normally put it with your vote, you're going to want to put it up above as a comment. The Commissioner Burton, yes, in the discussion, Commissioner Burton had requested Christina Marie also be added to that list.
Yes, right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Everybody recall that, yes, yes. Okay, so let's add that in there, thank you, Commissioner Burton. Okay. Okay. Now we're back on to April eighth. About April eighth? Yep.
Um, hold on, I have a question about that, um, under the roll call, um, was Sheila Walker present at that meeting?
Um, I do not believe Sheila was present. Okay, not, I don't think she was at this one, I think she was at the, at the next one.
Okay, and at this meeting, when, at what time did we discuss payment of travel expenses? Did we cover that at this meeting, I don't see it in here. Somewhere we talked about travel expenses.
Um. This Zoom interviews was selected, I mean, that's, um.
On our calls, we did Zoom interviews.
Yeah, we did Zoom interviews, we might not have even talked about that until the.
We had.
April tenth.
We had a meeting.
And that's when we said who, that Sheila and Michelle, I think, would be handling. Or somebody, Christine, or somebody was going to be handling that.
Okay, so you don't think we talked about how to pay for expenses? All right. Because somewhere we had to.
So, um, April tenth, let's go on to April tenth, if we have no other question, no other comments on that? Okay, we're going through this.
Everybody's good, um, oh, wait, this backup, um, under eleven, community redevelopment agency, which is a call to action, um, Commissioner Laurie moved to oppose, I don't know, twelve forty-two, um, I think it would be helpful to say the bill that would, um, restrict, um, CRA expenditures.
Bill restricting CRA expenditures.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Okay, let's move on, anything else?
Yeah, under revised, revised ordinance, under thirteen revised ordinance, twenty twenty five dash oh six, the bullet, um, should, uh, should always say moved as opposed to motioned. Okay.
Okay.
Then I have another one under. This must have been somewhere.
If you go to number five, motion approved by Commissioner Laurie, it just motioned by Commissioner Laurie, so we can take approved down under the urban tree grant. So we'll just take approved down on that one. Okay.
Where was that?
The number five, urban tree grant, public outreach meeting. Says motion approved by Commissioner Laurie. It said motion.
Oh, 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 right, 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 right. And also, anywhere it says across the city women's club. I believe that's woman singular with an A, not my B. But it is, okay, if that change could be made. And then actually, I had something on the prior page under fireworks contract.
Yes.
The motion, the very end where it says availability. It's after confirming funding received from donors for the full cost. That was the purpose of my motion. At that time, we were not going to approve signing the contract until all the money was.
Funding received until all funding is received is what you basically said.
Yes.
Confirming until all funding is received. Okay. All funding is received. Okay. Okay.
All right, that's the ordinance.
Okay, I'm gonna go over to seventeen. And I think that.
We're in seventeen.
Yeah, and you go.
Oh, I have seventeen.
Yeah, I have seventeen.
Okay.
I think that's the, that's the final page.
Yes.
Okay, is everybody good?
Good.
Okay, then let's move on to April twenty first. Does anybody have anything on the April twenty first agenda? Meetings, minutes. And.
In German, so Mayor Myers is interning again when nineteen AM, all work in order.
Right, there's no like shadows, secondary.
And there might not have been. Sometimes there is, sometimes there's not. So sometimes it just gets to the point of just saying. In German. So we'll have to just check on that, if we can check on that, just to make sure there was no motion.
You can do that with the workshop.
Yeah. I know, but sometimes we get to be anything. If there's not one.
But this was a warning meeting?
It was. Okay, so let's.
That's tired.
April twenty, I have to open it. April twenty second, twenty twenty five. The one thing on this is that I think if we can just make note that all commissioners were present.
Yes, ma'am.
My other thing to note is, we interviewed five candidates, or four candidates. And there's one thing. There's Mr. Eric Martin, or Mr. Jeff Shubridge, which is not really, I'm sorry. It's S H O O, and then Frank Traskow, but I put missing Patrick Jordan. And I believe it was before Derek.
Yeah, I think Derek was second.
Yeah.
I was second.
I wonder if that was technical difficulty. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm already.
Capture that whole front. I'll try on that there, thank you.
Well, I remember he was there because I think we discussed.
He was the first one we had, yeah.
Right, and he's discussed later in the.
And we're coming to comment, it has Ralph DeVito. I'm not sure if he is, but his name is spelled.
Thank you. Two Ts.
Yes. Some random.
Okay, can we move on to the next page? Anything on the next page? Okay, we've seen nothing. Let's go to the next page, to the last page. Here's everything.
Love Shubridge, his name is spelled.
Yeah, let's just make sure that.
Right, and there are also other public comments. I don't think my head is that who is not only one who made a comment. My recollection is that there were several comments. And was this the date of the? Was this the date of the the reception?
No, it was that evening. Yeah, it was that evening, after the reception.
Okay, how did this happen?
Because we had the reception first.
Okay, because if we had the reception first, then what time did we can be?
Well, we started it, we started the meeting at the reception, basically. We opened it up because we were all here. If I remember correctly, we opened it all up, and then we went from the reception into the, into the candidate, into the candidates interviews. And so we just need to probably make a note on here, that public reception.
Right, because I remember I wrote the paragraph that described the reception and that there were people here. I think we had, what, at least twenty to twenty five people today.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed, I noticed that it was at four.
We just need to put reception started at four. Public reception to meet the candidates with interviews following. Okay. If we're done with that, let's move on to May eighth. Again, Commissioner DeVito, if you find your notes and you want to ask that they be amended, you can petition the commission for that. May eighth. Does anybody have anything on May eighth? This was the one, remember, we went, this was pretty extensive when we did verbatim, based on, based on this, because this was the discussion from, we had all people in the audience from the ICE. It was just following the ICE earlier that week.
Okay, I don't remember very well.
So it was, that one was pretty lengthy. Do we have any changes? Does anybody have any notations in this? I honestly, I didn't have, I don't have any in this. So then, if none, let's move on to May nineteenth. This was where we had the second presentation by Oasis. Which that property now is up for sale.
Okay, this, and at some point, I think, when we had, whatever meeting it was we had on the minutes, I had made this suggestion that all of them have to be dated and have page numbers of the model, and then, you know, you can have a.
Okay, if we go forward and not go forward, let's just see if they can do that, if they can put a page number.
It should, because under golf cart ordinance. The first bullet under my name where I said I noted the absence of marked crossings over County Road three oh eight rendering the city, it should be parts of the city.
Okay. Parts of the city, okay.
Not the whole city.
Okay, does anybody have anything else on this? Then let's move on to May twenty seventh. First page, second page.
Oh, third.
On to the third page.
For the public comment.
Absolutely on the second page.
Commissioner Moore, reflect on the importance of these early local shopping options, and which is, and public comment.
Oh.
No.
She was.
Right.
Oh, it's up in the, up in this.
Sorry. Right there, she's the last one on the top there.
I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't hear you.
It's under public comment, there's like Alon Spicer, Cindy White-Villar, Ms. Franklin, Steve Cummings, then Lodge, and Commissioner Moore.
That should go up above.
Just go up there, just below Commissioner Laurie.
Right.
So we can just move first, just, just. To be part of discussion, right, it's commission discussion, right. And then also, that's great, thank you, Commissioner Moore. I knew there was. As long as it commented, I thought that was accurate, but.
So on the next page, do you have anything?
On the same page, I do. Okay, under five historic preservation grant, Miller Middle School. I made a motion to apply for the small matching grant. He discussed a small matching grant opportunity. We need to say the small matching grant was for, what was that for, Commissioner Laurie?
It's for expanding, or.
We're working, he's working on it right now.
We're writing on that, our.
Our historic.
Our historic district.
Yes.
National Register, so they're working on that right now. Okay, that's right, additional information point.
Wait, hang on, so he's working on writing the grant.
That's our, it's our, it's our proposal's argument.
Yeah, okay, so we.
We just need, there's this additional question.
Okay, so it was a small matching grant opportunity to.
For updating the National Register.
To fund the, to fund and update of the National Register Historic District.
Yes.
Because we are applying for quite a few of these things, and it should.
Okay.
He said it.
So the last page, anything on the last page?
Wait, hang on, I have something else on that same page, under Historic Preservation Grant. Very last paragraph, it starts noted five forty five PM internet service, the last.
Five forty PM internet service was just up to.
Right, okay, but on the second line, it says the city will not pursue a larger grant at this time. We should, I think, replace a larger grant at this time and say will not pursue the larger special categories grant from the Division of Historical Resources. And that would have been for the Miller Middle School property.
Okay, anything on the last page?
No.
Nothing on the last page. Let's move on to June eleven.
Number four, rate setting and financial oversight.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. There's no, there's no indication of who was present here.
Something that may have been there is Commissioner DeVito.
Oh, no, okay, that's an opening remark. Well.
That covers up for them.
So if we just need to add, like we do with the rest, just to keep them uniform, we'll put, you know, all present. Because I believe everybody was present in that one, so all commissioners were present.
And again, this is the one where it just says, I had put, this is in my notes that I had somewhere. And under rate setting and financial oversight or whatever, first, we need Katie's last name and her title. And also, I believe, this started out, not with our discussion, but she made a presentation to us. And it does not say that. But I think she made a presentation on where our gas company is now.
The whole thing, this whole thing was a presentation by her. I think that's why we welcomed attendees. That's the only reason that all the commissioners would have welcomed attendees. It's because I believe it was Katie and her staff that were here.
Right.
To make the present, to make this presentation. So we put it up there at the beginning. The purpose was outlined to discuss the city's gas utility infrastructure, and so we're to discuss the city's, you know, a presentation, you can put in there, outline to, for presentation by presentation by Katie with Florida Gas to discuss the city's gas utility infrastructure. Because basically, she was the one that was giving us all this information, and it was presenting to us.
And it's a workshop.
And it was a workshop.
We didn't take any action.
Yeah, no action. So I think that's what, that's all you have, that's all we have. The purpose of the workshop was, was, and you're gonna have to say outline, the purpose of the workshop was for a presentation by Katie with Florida Gas, or you could even put just Florida Gas Utility, to discuss the city's gas utility infrastructure.
Right, but could we please put in her name and title on it? I believe she was here with another gentleman.
She was. Tom, that was another gentleman that was with her, I think, at that time.
On that stage.
The young, the new, he had just started, he'd just come on.
On number four, so it's an identity fight and show this side, it says the potential involvement by the Public Service Commission. I think we just need to remove that, because that's wrong, what we're talking about. Actually, it was potential involvement by Florida Gas Utilities to help us run the system. It has nothing to do with Public Service Commission.
Right. So it should, a potential involvement by Florida Gas Utilities, not the Florida Gas.
Does that make it sound like personal?
Well, they don't regulate our rates.
Well, they won't, they won't regulate.
They will.
Do something wrong.
Quickly.
No, but we don't go to that. So second page, anything on the second page? I don't have to.
Okay, I think we're good. Let's move on to June twelfth. Anything on the first page?
Yes, if we could delete the bullet that says was signed by. Just say pledge allegiance.
Yeah.
I hope that this, this was regular meeting. I think that's, is there.
Okay, second page.
Second page, under public comment. Second bullet. Angel Duke's last name does not have an S at the end. And I believe was Ken Roberts asking for permit approval?
No.
On behalf.
He was speaking on behalf of this, to the G T celebration.
Or did he just tell us about it?
I don't think he, I mean, he was just.
I think he just.
Her spokesperson, because she was not there, she was ill. Oh, I remember that, but he didn't, he didn't speak to the permit.
I thought he did. And then again.
He did speak to it in the public comment, other than encouraging us to, to please support this.
I kind of thought he did, because I think he needed to leave, and I thought we let him speak to the permit. I thought we did that.
Second page, anything on the second page?
Yes, under seven point one, fire chief recognition. Under the second bullet. Chief Hyphold, thank the commission introduced his successor. I don't know, somewhere in there, there was a shield presentation.
It was when he, the introduction of the new fire chief is when he did, he gave him the shield.
Okay, can we say, because it should say chief.
And presented him with his, with a shield. Out that. Okay. Now, just down to the second page. What did you have, Commissioner?
Well, I just wanted to say, it does come back to a special event permanent, asked for for G T celebration.
And that was during.
Yeah, it was.
The regular. Yes, yes. So and he didn't stay for that, he just voted on public comments.
Okay, and before we leave the second page, under seven point three, before the word proclamation, that should say a memorial proclamation. And this is a change I made before, then the first bullet, Mayor Myers read proclamation. If we can take out recognizing and put honoring the late Ginny Daphne's contributions, and after that, to the community.
Is that okay? I'm fine with that. Is there anyone? Second page. I don't see anything. Does anybody see anything on the second page?
Yes, Diamond Wireless. Do we have the last name of Karen who made the presentation?
Yeah, if not, it can just be Cameron with Diamond Communications. Do you have anything else on that page?
I do. Under number eight, summary of code enforcement lien reduction. Somewhere in here, it doesn't say it was presented by Pam Taylor, code officer, and it doesn't say use as recommendations. Well, it says property posted, special magistrate required. I don't know, it doesn't say it was presented by Pam Taylor, and they're really, the recommendations from the special magistrate.
Okay, so we can just put this is presented by code enforcement officer Pam Taylor. Okay.
And this was. And it does not say, it says what we decided to do. It doesn't say that we are implementing the code. Right, and it, it does not say, it says what we decided to do, it doesn't say that we are implementing the code, the special magistrate's recommendation. But I think that's what it was.
Well, it says on here, special magistrate recommendate, recommended fine, fine deduction. The original fine was a thousand, so all you'd have to put is the decision was to reduce lien to administrative cost of a hundred twenty-three payable in thirty days. I think that was the magistrate's recommendation.
But it doesn't say so.
Well, then I said it was, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Go on to the next page, anything on the next page? Nothing, let's go to the last page. Um, we had to have extended this meeting, so there should have been a, um, a motion at some point to extend this.
Um, and the only other thing I would add is where it says
motion authorize city manager and city attorney to negotiate lien reduction with potential new owner. Not the current owner, with potential new owner.
Yeah.
Okay.
To, and so you would go to negotiate with the potential new owner lien reduction to twenty-five thousand in compliance.
Well, I think they both have to agree. Um, with part of, with part of sale.
Yes, but we want to make sure that it doesn't, that the previous owner, that doesn't take place with the previous owner. So I think this was really a request of the potential new owner that is part of their closing.
Yeah.
So.
Does, um, and also on the prior page, um. Three things, twelve point two, special event permit, G A team celebration, it should say at Eataline Park. That's where that was taking place. Um, twelve point three, the emergency purchase authorization for lawnmower. First bullet says approved purchase up to sixteen thousand dollars, twelve thousand from side by side fund. Where would that be? We don't have a side by side fund.
Um, it should have been from, um. It would have been.
Funds to buy a side by side.
Yeah, so it should have, it should have been. Side by side. Steve, would you get those truppards?
Excuse me?
With that, it, with whatever fund that should have come out of. It's their, um, operate, is it their operational?
Those came out of Better Place Funds.
Yeah, yep.
And we, we put that in the budget this year reflecting that.
Okay, okay, so wait a minute, so that would be twelve thousand dollars from Better Place Plan Funds remainder from public works.
So if any done over the twelve thousand, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then also under city dock repairs, um. I don't, we had two motions, one to approve two thousand dollars and another for thirteen, and it doesn't say where we were taking those funds from.
I believe it was also supposed to be Better Place and then we were gonna reimburse it.
You were gonna reimburse it, yes. Okay, can I posit that with, I'm pretty positive that was from Better Place, because that's, at that time where we had it.
So it should say, but is that something that the clerk should check on before she sets one stone?
So yeah, Steve, would you look into that, please? Okay, let's go to the next page. We've already talked about that, there should have been a motion somewhere to extend the meeting and then a motion to adjourn the meeting. Okay, let's go on to June, July ten.
Okay, anything on this? Okay, also, on first page, under also present, I believe Mark Corret had to be there.
Um, one of these, he was not, we'll just have to check on it and make sure he might have been there because it said account plan amendment.
Um, well, this.
It was either he or Katie, one of them attended it, so.
Hang on, just get, um, hang on just a second, we are at the end, I believe, of the minutes that we previously approved and we agreed to, um, rescind the previous approval and replace with today's. Uh, we approved July tenth minutes, uh, didn't we, at the August regular meeting? And I have the changes that I sent for distribution. Um, and I believe this is the meeting where Mark Corret made a presentation about um, the ground floor residential amendments and all that, um, so he definitely was there.
That was in the central business, that was for the central business district.
Right, and his, his whole presentation.
Okay, well, if he was there, you would just verify who was present, if he was or Rebecca was.
It was Mark. I remember this.
Okay, then it was Mark.
Remember, you can just.
Look up who was there, okay, so let's move on to page two of this meeting. Do we have anything on that? Um, so this is where we tabled all of these, so this is where they all came in at that, at that meeting. All of these ones that we've talked about, and they were tabled, um, until a special meeting can be held.
Right, that was scheduled for August the fifth, yeah.
Um.
Cause this is July ten.
Okay, so do we have anything on the third page?
Hang on, oh, hold on. This is from public hearings. Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my changes, shows for public public hearing. Just reading what, um.
Well, but it says public hearing, round. On page number six.
Yes.
Wait, that's the problem.
Then it literally should be public comment.
Right, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, where it says number six, that was supposed to be a public comment. Then, um, don't we.
Cause then they didn't have public hearings on top.
Right. But there's no, don't usually have a heading that says public hearings?
We usually do, public hearing.
Right, so there was no heading that says public hearings?
So let's just add a public hearing. Well, it says number six, public hearing, no, 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 that was.
Yeah.
That took a public comment.
Okay.
And because it says none, no one made the comment, we add.
Okay, so then we go into public hearing immediately following that, and public hearing, so we need a header for that.
Yes.
Okay, so we have anything else on that, on that page after that, seven, eight, nine? Okay, so let's go on to ten.
Okay.
Sorry, number nine, it says, uh, and it says Crescent Lake Fish Camp, L C, it should be Crescent Fish Camp.
Crescent Lake.
Okay, where is that, number one?
Number one. Go back, I just.
Yes.
Sorry, number eight, it should be Crescent Fish Camp.
So if we move on to ten, I know it has where we didn't recess, um, Matt Clark, it, it doesn't show where we recessed for the C R A. So we just need that.
Well, that's it, you closed the record.
That I did, but it doesn't say that we revoked it.
That we reopened, yeah, that was the, that was supposed to say.
And I don't know that we had anything, it doesn't, there's nothing, there's nothing under C R A, so we might not have, um, you know, what we had.
Hold on.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, and was that, the thing to do is to go back and look at the agenda and see if there were any items on the agenda.
We just need to check on that for what we have for C R A, if in fact we had anything for C R A.
Were, were there items, cause it could be that we overlooked it, okay. Under business items, after we resume, and I assume there should be a number to business items, somehow we put a number.
Business items, one, two, three.
Right, but there's, okay, see where it says.
Six.
See where it says eleven C R A meeting? Then usually business items would have some kind of a number, but we don't start numbering it again until city manager reporting.
Okay, so the twelve next to business items, if you would, please.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, to me, we can survive without that, but under business items, where it says central business district, ground floor residential amendments, um, Mark Corret made, um, a presentation about unfinished business and, um, that he felt was a.
Okay, so give me some verbiage that you want to put in there regarding Mark Corret, please.
Well, I don't, I don't have it, I mean, it's, it's on the tape.
Okay, so it should be on the agenda, it'll check on the agenda, just that Mark Corret made a presentation regarding the central business district.
Right, and, well, it was, he feels that this is. Right, and Mayor, we had a, we had a commission discussion about this, this wasn't a large part of the agenda, because he felt um, that part of our central business district planning, uh, needed to be, uh, ground floor residential. No ground floor residential. Um, and we had before us, uh, it doesn't say that Mr. Ron Mallard, who's property owner on Central Avenue, he was there to speak and ask, um, for, uh, the authorization to have a ground floor apartment in back of his building. And we had a lengthy discussion about that.
Well, because the length of, the length of the code is written now, is you cannot have any residential on the, the ground floor. And so we wanted, we needed changes so that we could have.
We could have.
It in the back.
Have in the back, yes.
Or upstairs, or adjacent.
So we have on there ground floor residential amendment, so we can have ground floor residential discussion.
And what is on the, on the agenda is central business district regarding amended ground floor residential.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking, but also, Mayor, this does not include the fact that Mr. Ron Mallard spoke and requested authorization for his, um, renovation to be able to include a ground floor residential apartment.
Because I don't think we, we, whereas that's quite important to be.
That's gonna be, that's gonna have to be in the public comment, that's gonna have to be in our public meetings that we have to have.
Cause we were, we were, he's spoken, he made the change, he even spoke, yes.
But it doesn't.
But he didn't ask permission, I mean, that was, you know, had a process in place, well, we never changed it, so we're talking about the need.
Okay. He just talked about the need, so, so please, if you want to add in here, let's get through this. That, that, you know, Mr. Ron Mallard spoke to this, the need for this, okay? Is that good? Let's move on to the next page. See nothing, let's go to the final page.
I want to be, too, but, um, fortunately, the Florida City of Royal Hall recognition.
Okay.
It was Fisher, you have an eye.
Okay, so please note that, um, it was presented to Commissioner Womery and Commissioner Vito.
Right, and that, that was the change previously made, um, also on, um. On the prior page, actually. Hold on here, um. Okay, under number five, city attorney reimbursement, says sent by Commissioner Vito to approve payment to attorney Holmes was, I don't know if this was part of the motion, but purpose was for attending the federal court mediation.
Okay, for attending federal court mediation.
Right, and it was in addition to the F M I T attorney, that's why he was asking us for that. Um, we did okay, actions to extend, um, oh, also under nine, August regular meeting date rescheduled um, from August fourteenth, and the purpose was for commission members to be able to attend Florida League of Cities Annual Conference.
And we state that also somewhere later, so it's later, so I mean, it's, right, but that's why we didn't. It's a, it's a whole different settlement.
Um, well, okay, that's all I have for that.
Okay, last page, um, I know we need something to show that there was a motion to extend.
Um, that strangely is in a different location.
It's a litigation, round fifty-seven, ten plus.
Oh, that's right, we did, I apologize, you're right.
Um, but you know what, it does not say for nine fifty-seven, it does not say who made the motion. Um, for either, for either one, it does not say who made the, needs a motion and second for both.
Okay, with that, let's move on to July twenty-first.
Um, from the top, this is budget workshop and special meeting, which one was?
Right.
This should have just probably been.
A motion.
This was a special meeting, legal committee extension. So I think it was the first we met, oh my, don't you remember this, we met on the budget workshop and then following, immediately following that, we had the special meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I was confused.
Okay, Steve's name needs to be added to that, Finance Director Steve.
Yes, and then arriving shortly, I don't think that is Steve.
Um, I would put, um, arrived later.
I don't think it needs, I mean, he was there.
Whatever, right, but not shortly.
Yeah, just to help out, just put his last name.
And then also.
Have your last name as Steve?
Come home. Steve, I know.
At this point, I don't remember my last name, sorry.
Exactly, um, Mayor, I have a, I have a question about who was present at this meeting. Um, at some meeting that we had, the tax collector spoke to us. I don't remember so far seeing that in any of these minutes.
That was property advisor, I think.
So, uh, the property advisor, well, whoever, right, it wasn't Brenda, it was.
Um, he came, they came in and made the presentation, and that was before, that was before we made the, um.
Maximillage.
The minimum, yeah, when we, the maximum millage, when we did our maximum millage, so that would have been in one of those meetings. So we just need to look back on the agenda and see, Steve, do you recall that? He came in before we set our maximum millage.
Yes, I believe so.
And they made that, they were here to answer questions and to give us an overview on that, okay, how they arrived, what they arrived at, okay. Okay, so, second page on this one, anything?
Um, this is, this, okay, then special meeting part.
Yeah, we're in the special meeting.
Public comment, this is for, expressed by, that his name is Gray, Gray Solomon, and then Rick Bowles.
Is it G R A Y or G A R E Y?
G R A Y.
Okay.
Wait, what page are we on?
The second page, I think, the special meeting.
Okay, are we on July twenty-first?
Yeah, okay, then there's special meeting.
Oh, public comment, oh, mercy.
And it's Womery, it's Rick Bowles, so then it's B O W, I mean, yes.
Thank you. Okay.
I just said that it's time for everyone to, Rick Bowles says.
Okay, next page.
Okay, wait, Mayor, good, we need to go back to the first page. Um. Very under discussion topics, very first bullet. Um, where it says retirement benefits for former commissioners suggested from forty-eight hundred to seventy-two hundred. It should say to account for an additional commissioner retiring in November, what was it, twenty twenty-four? Cause otherwise, it just looks like we raised the retirement, and then set by statute.
Commissioner retire twenty twenty-four, okay.
Right, so it's for additional.
So let's move on, guys, cause we're already an hour and a half into, into minutes, so let's keep, so let's keep moving. So let's get to the last page, Winn-Dixie conversion, conversation, discussion, it says conversion.
Conversion discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there should, there should mention State Representative Johnson's side, so just representative side.
I don't think that really makes a difference, we only have one.
Yeah, it's just.
But you should always start, okay, start on. It's the first thing.
Okay, do we have anything else on this page, if not, I'm good.
Wait, I have a question, what is the correct spelling under dog safety concern, what is the correct spelling of clinical tree? Is that correct?
Yes, it's.
I think it's, what is it?
No, it should be, isn't that O, P M O M S? Uh, then let's get the spelling before we try to guess, spend any time on guessing, so let's get the spelling on there, okay?
So let's move on to the July thirty-first. Yes. Um, I am.
It is clinical, C L E, then O, then S, what, lay.
Lane, thank you. So it's a O.
Yes, O, that's okay. That's the one behind, um.
So July thirty-first, anything on the first page? Going once, going twice, anything on the second page? Okay. Um, third page. And fourth page.
Room.
Fifth page, one July thirty-first, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, I, I didn't have the idea to change this on this one, so, okay, let's move on to August ten.
Wait. Uh, gentleman, says emotional, Mayor Myers, a gentleman, a gentleman, a gentleman, a special meeting would immediately follow this, a military military. Could be, do you have, cause I didn't, I just need to, I can't find it.
Um.
Is it you?
Where we stood the military.
That was, that was very like.
So we need to probably end that one.
Yeah, what happens without, I'm just, I do it.
And that might be where he actually spoke, that might be where he spoke to us prior to having that.
So, or what we saying is that we have a minute for the workshop, but not the special meeting, July thirty-first.
They were needed, yeah, okay.
So we need July thirty-first, special meeting minutes.
Okay, August fifth, we have a special meeting. First page. Um, second page.
Wait, wait, on first page, I have a question about that, um, where it says also present, were Nancy LaJoy and Keith Harris at this meeting? Because I believe Keith Harris spoke, and it doesn't list him as being present.
Um.
Who other person?
If, I know he spoke to the, um, stormwater issue affecting John Taylor. Probably.
Okay, so we put Keith and Nancy, okay.
I don't know if, whether Nancy LaJoy was there or not.
Okay, well, just make sure that Keith was there, she, it would not occur.
Yeah, that, yeah, because this
It's a state, no, it's
So you were there.
Yes, ma'am.
It was mentioned, um, from the work director Keith, then we're how we're talking about China.
Right, I don't, I don't agree to it, so, okay, let's go on to the second page.
Okay, second page, um, just the first, first paragraph, talking about the dropped letters intended for residents about the city budget process. Was it not also about and proposed miller rate? Wasn't that the main point, we explained the miller rate?
Um.
I believe that the letter was primarily about.
Well, at that point, we had not set the final millage rate, so
Okay, it's a tentative military.
We had set a tentative millage rate, so I don't know, I think it might have been the city budget process and millage rate setting. I think that's what we need to put.
Yes. And millage rate setting?
Okay.
Yes, because the millage rate was a key reason for sending that out.
Okay, so, okay, anything else on this page? Um, if not, let's move on to the next page. Anything on the next page?
Um, well, it's just, it says public works director Keith, it should say Harris.
Okay, um, next page.
The one that has budget allocations, discussion, okay. Under Florida prime investment discussion, uh, after board commission, I don't think we need to work briefly. Just if we can take that out, okay?
Revisited prior authorization, okay, anything else on this page? If nothing, let's go to the last page. Anything on this last page?
Do we have a question?
Okay, yeah. Okay, August twelve.
Um, yes, on the first page, under staff present.
It's General Counsel, Sheriff, he's in the Sheriff's Office.
Right, because he's not really our staff. To at least say, it, actually, I don't know.
But anyway, he's, he's well, General Counsel, he's
Right, right, no, my, my change was to say that he's General Counsel for the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, but it says staff present, and he was not really our staff. Well, um, he's a staff, he's not our staff.
Just marking off completely, that's marking off completely.
No, can't do that.
He is, he is somewhat staffed because we, we contract with the sheriff's office.
Because we Yes. Well, as long as it says he's the sheriff's general counsel, I think that'll be good.
Add that in there, okay, second page.
Okay, I have a question, uh, under announcements, third bullet, where it says A S A helps dental office, is that A S A?
Or is it Z?
It's Z A Y A. Because the, are they officially A Z A, or is that a Z A?
That's what it's called.
It used to be A Z A, but they've
Now it's A S A, okay, thank you. Um, and I have a question there, it was for the express, the library sent us a letter of thanks, do we remember what that was for?
Did you give them money?
We're giving them five hundred bucks.
No, we gave them three hundred.
Three hundred bucks, excuse me.
We agreed to give them three hundred.
Well, I have a question about that, like, okay, we did, and they sent us a letter of thanks, okay. Um, okay, and this, um, actually, you can see where it says approval of minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this actually says some of the changes that were made.
Which was all the
Right, which we obviously went over, so at some point, before we approved these, we need to rescind our prior approval for uh, July then took place, what is this, on August twelve?
We've made these, like, public hearings, we changed that to public comments, we did it in a press city fish camp.
Yeah, maybe they'll, they'll just say they're being
The kind of
Okay, since we previously voted, um, we should rescind it.
True, we can, I mean, I would rescind the minutes of July tenth, seven, put it on August
Well, you may rescind approval.
Rescind approval of minutes.
Hey, do I have a second?
How many, July tenth?
I'm second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So is nay, okay. So move, let's go on to, um, number five, public comment. Did you have something prior?
No. Okay, I do have a question about the first paragraph under public comment. Um, says the twenty twenty-four audit was nearly complete, comma, and then it says, with all audits current?
Yes, because she stated it as if all of our audits were not current, that we had much like other communities, that we had ones that had not been done. Um, and, and, and we have done those, and the only ones that were still at that time that was due in June, that weren't currently working on, but that's the current years.
Okay, but really, really, hang on, I'm very, I specifically remember those comments. Okay, but if we're talking about August twelve, and it's the audit for the year ending twenty twenty-four, then they can't be current because it was due June thirty.
She talked, we talked about that, she made it, when she made her statement, she stated as if we had multiple years that were behind. And we corrected, and we corrected her on that, that the only one that we have currently pending is the one that we're working on, the twenty-three, twenty-four, but all the other ones have been completed.
Well, um, oh, it would make more sense to after the word, complete the period and say all prior audits have been completed.
Okay. Let me change that.
Okay.
Okay, what else do you have on that page, anything, Commissioner Wory, you have something?
On the presentations with the historic survey update.
Yeah.
Um, one of the bullets down at the festival, I think it's identification of the D I A, the interview designer, it should be B I A.
B I A?
Yes, it's the National Criminal Association, yeah, former person. And then it says, we have them as well, and then under the presenting post score to identity, we're, we're not firm capital, we're rural, that's Pearson.
That's Pearson.
We're the vast capital.
The vast capital, yeah. So what did he say?
He said vast capital.
How does that?
I thought he said something about firm, I, I thought he did, because I specifically remember it triggering me, although not, but I didn't cor, I didn't want to correct him. So I do believe that's, that's what he meant.
We're the vast capitals, so just stay that firm.
Okay, anything else on this one?
Yes, um, under presentations, the very first line, it says, Mr. Weaver presented. Um, I think we should say presented, be completed, and take out, and update. He was presenting to us the finished historic surveys, I would say presented, be completed.
Um, national histor, the historic, not national, historic survey.
Right, and also, um, where it says recognizing contributors. Well, that's not really right, um, you can't, um, he completed an update is what he did. Right, whenever it, it's, okay, if he completed, it, it, of course, it was, it is completed because it was completed thirty years ago. No, he, this was a new, it was a update, so
Well, it was a complete new survey.
Right, what update? What he presented was the completed update, but when you go to the next line, it said he recognized contributors, Marjorie Neil Nelson, she's, it should say the late, uh, Marjorie Neil.
Okay, because that, the late, Marjorie Neil Nelson, okay.
Right, and as well, um, take out and put Ron West, Commissioner Wory, and others, because he specifically mentioned Commissioner Wory, and he mentioned others.
Okay.
Um, so I think that is very important, and as well, I would like to have included, um, that the survey update was funded by a small matching grant from the Florida Division of Historic Resources, and I commented, uh, former city manager Charles Rudd, who recommended that we apply for that grant. I thought it was important to recognize Mr. Rudd.
Okay.
Can we? Can we also add that it's available on the website, first, yeah.
Did you, did you say that? Because this is about what happened. I mean, I actually commented Mr. Rudd.
Well, we have a copy of it here, so you know.
Yes, right.
And it's on the
Okay, let's move on to the next page. Okay. Uh, again, this is where we need a closed and opened, um, for the CRA.
Yeah. CRA, mm-hmm.
Wait a minute, before that, um, I don't, under
Don't have it in your notes? If you don't have, have it in your notes, we're coming up on two hours on that.
Uh-huh, and I have it in my notes, right here. Um, first bullet, under key terms, says contract term, there's from three years to one year, in order to maintain the same contract amount. That was what that was for, and then the third bullet, and it says maintain existing service levels. Um, I don't, I would take out the one additional deputy infrastructure, and I think that's just confusing. Um, and then where it says Commissioner DiVito questioned the hiring and training clause, it was, um, the payment for hiring and training clause, that, that clause is about payment.
Okay, hiring, training, okay.
The hiring, the payment for hiring and training clause.
Okay, that's the payment, the payment for hiring and training.
For, well, I've never liked that, and then, um, the summary under sex ban ordinance, draft ordinance, twenty twenty-five twelve, um, that is not the right description of that ordinance, um, and I have a description. Um, basically, he wanted us to adopt the same ordinance as the county, and he was asking all municipalities to adopt the county, the same ordinance as the county, that's what he was asking us to do. And then, in the second sentence, he additionally discussed the potential for criminal enforcement of certain city ordinances. Um, it would be instead of criminal for P S O, P C S O enforcement of certain city ordinances by imposing criminal penalties for those vi, for those violations. It's, it's not all of our ordinances.
Well, it doesn't say all for certain, for certain city ordinances, so it doesn't say all city ordinances, so I'm, I'm comfortable with how it's currently, how it currently reads, if everybody knows it.
But the, the ordinance, the description of the ordinance that he is proposing, he's asking
In all municipalities to adopt
The county, right, the same as the county.
Okay.
Right.
Same, actually, to adopt same terms as the county.
Yep.
So it wouldn't be their, their ordinance, it would be the same terms as the, their county.
Right, and then, this is very important, now, this relates to, he additionally discusses the potential for enforcement of criminal enforcement of certain city ordinances. Mr. Holmes provided some very important information that I think we should include, says Mr. Holmes pointed out that for any criminal prosecution of the city ordinance, the city would be required to pay for a public defender if needed. I mean, that's important.
If everybody wants that added, do you want that added?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
I think it's important, otherwise it's lost. I'm not saying it's not important, I just don't think that we have to add it to these minutes. Well, then, there's no record of it, and when you're reading about this It's in the ordinance.
But we haven't taken that up.
No, it's not in the ordinance, there's no ordinance.
There's no ordinance at this time, so we haven't taken that up, so
Okay, so it's about, I have a reason. There's no way you get it up.
Commissioner DiVito, don't put words in, in anybody's
That's my opinion.
Well, that's your opinion, but you're saying that that's as if she said that.
No.
She didn't say that.
I'm saying
She just said that here, because we don't currently have, he just made, he made the comment to that.
It should be in the record because it's important information for us to
I'm gonna move on, we need to close and, and open for the CRA business. Do we have anything else in downtown partnership M O B renewal?
I think the public hearing, twenty-three thousand seven, this is our column, I don't think it's very projected.
No, so
So it should be correct. Who else on the original?
Okay, okay, wait, what number are we on?
That one, that was twenty-three thousand seven, this is our column.
Right, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Anything else on this page?
Um, yes, budget meeting day, we rescheduled it to September tenth, and that was at the request of, who was it, the tax collector or the property appraiser?
It was the property appraiser.
Okay, the county property appraiser, to avoid conflict with other budget heroes.
It was, it's
Okay.
Um, on the next, third person, please.
Okay.
It says, um, seven oh eight cabinet. I don't, I don't, I don't think I read it without my ears. There's
Okay.
Yes. And then the next thing down is the Andrew report, says Colbert Community Park Phase One, heard.
Yeah.
I believe that's gonna be Colbert.
Yes, it is.
And for that.
Right.
F R D A P.
Right.
And I'm not sure what a one hundred thousand dollar note phone wastewater infrastructure grant is, Mr. Mark looking at us?
I'm sorry, I asked a question, yes.
It says, the area has, in the, in the city Andrew report, they were preparing a one hundred thousand dollar note phone wastewater infrastructure grant.
Yes, sir.
What's a note, note phone?
Not, unavailability, but from what entity, I think, is more important.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was wondering.
That was this through, through, uh, state agency, I want to say it was either FEMA or, or F D M.
I was just taking out a note phone.
And that was for the wastewater.
And rather than F D M, I don't think it was F D M.
I think you were talking about at that time that there was a possibility that FEMA was doing something to that.
I believe it was FEMA. Okay, it was for FEMA.
Um, Mayor, also, if we could go back up to code enforcement lien reductions. Um, it doesn't say that the code officer presented them, and it doesn't say that these were the recommendations of the special magistrate.
We need to add that code officer presented and recommendation from the magistrate. Okay.
Um, and as well, under twelve, city attorney reports.
China Law.
It's China Mark, and also, the very first, uh, bullet, um, was my understanding, it's not an ethics complaint, it's an employee.
Yeah.
Um, and then, on the next page, do we need an extension of the, of the, um, meeting? So we don't have that when we extended the meeting.
Okay.
Let's move on, we can, August nineteenth. I have something on the second page, okay? So on the second page, under staff, it says special planning, and the first paragraph, second line, should be David Frank. Um, and I would put March twenty twenty-six. And also in that paragraph, I don't think it's necessary to have the information in parentheses about why we may not be, why two employees might be continuing.
With the, with potential departures of personnel J T and Brandon, okay, take those, the are in parentheses out, okay?
And, and my suggestion was that we ask, that we not share that kind of information at future meetings. Um,
Oh, like, that's how it
I mean, it's already happened, but I'm just saying.
Well, it's, it's, it was stated, though, it's obviously the program picked that up, so we'll keep that in mind as we go, okay, anything else, second page?
Um, somehow, sorry, under three budget reviews, oh my goodness, wait a minute.
That's true, yeah, that means our alarm's up.
No, no, no.
Well, I'm gonna have to turn the point on with the cap. Cause I'm gonna have to leave, and so I'm gonna have to turn this over, because I
Okay, sorry, um, I did not, the commission review, the newly separated solid waste enterprise fund, that's not very clear, what did we, we took solid waste out of the building utilities budget and put it in its separate, you know, section of the budget?
Yeah, we did that. It's not like we moved second.
Well, something was said about it, but, um, let me just read solid waste enterprise fund, which has been removed from the, where it wasn't before, building utilities budget.
I think it, whether the newly separated, just technically separated out, and the solid waste enterprise fund, how many, that's right.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm making
Okay, let's move on. Okay, anything on the next page? Okay, last page, uh, it says down here adjournment was at ten AM and that's when it started, so we just need to get the accurate time.
Okay, um, and Mayor, going, going back to the prior page under budget review wastewater department, that very last paragraph, it says the commission removed, didn't we request the removal of the ten percent repair and replace activity? I mean, we just asked for it to be removed from operating revenues.
Yes.
But we didn't remove it. I mean, that's, that's really a staff function. It's, it's required, right?
Yes.
So if I.
Higher orders.
Yes.
Right, if we could just say requested removal of.
Okay.
Um, on the second page, did somebody mention on this next page regulatory issues, it says city manager Steve, where it should be Derek Martin?
Yeah.
And then that same paragraph, um, the, it does not say, the city manager explained that the problem comes from the proximity of the monitoring wells, um, to visit. Where are they near?
They're near for. Crazy old town.
Well, it's a dry field plus all the agriculture, so you got all those phosphates that have run off those.
Right, but basically he was explaining the reason that we're so excited about this is the problem stems from the location of our monitoring wells and the penalty seems unfair because F D E P chose the locations for these monitoring wells.
Right.
And I think we need to say that because that's what we're, we're against.
Okay.
We're, we're in a, a market that F D E P created.
Consider it stated, these wells were placed.
Well, the problem is the location.
Let's, let's give her some language, okay? So we, please give language, your recommendation.
Exactly. The problem stems from the location of the monitoring wells and the penalty seems unfair because well location was chosen by F D E P.
Okay.
They told us where to go.
Okay, last page. We've already talked about that the time needs to be different, anything else? If not, I'm moving on to August twenty eighth.
Right, did we ever figure out where, when does the property appraiser come and speak to us?
No, we said that, but probably at that meeting where we set the tenant millage that we do not have minutes for.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we already talked about that. Go on to August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, uh, the roll call, so it's, can you show me down and start discussing?
Oh, thank you, but, um, also, um, the first line where it says city clerk conducted roll call, I think you can strike everything after roll call, you don't have to say when following members present. It's kind of confusing.
You know, when you're doing this AI.
Yeah.
Are you doing a little bit of this AI, these notes, these?
That's what the program, that's what the whole thing is.
That, that's why, uh, I gave some of this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Extra.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not.
Okay, so this was all about when they came in, gave the presentation.
Do we know their problem states, right, they're just very. Do you, for Robert Brown, do you know?
Yes.
For, okay, I just saw some other words.
Yes. Okay, and, but. Right, so Mayor, if I could, in the paragraph under insurance presentations, um, says section covered presentations from, um, it's really two entities with proposals for the city's fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six liability insurance. They are not both brokers.
Well, let's just put from two separate insurance brokers, how's that?
They're not both brokers. That's why it said entities.
In, insured.
F M I T is not a broker.
Okay. Regarding potential cost, okay. Anything else on the next page?
Um, under, from my team title, it's called, it's Den, Denham?
It's, yeah.
D E N A H A N. And it's part senior, and I'm, I think he's on the next meeting table, I don't do that on the website, just.
And the next page, budget review and discussion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, um, there were two items that I think were discussed on this page. The, um, brown and brown cost saves in part were from a two percent commission giveback.
We don't have to put that in there, that's.
Sounds like what was.
It's in the, it's in the record and we, if we get into that, we've got.
There'll be a lot of, yeah.
Um.
Well, cause I, because I'm.
This is just a workshop anyway, if you want.
That's right.
We have their presentations.
Yeah, we have their presentations.
Okay, but, and then another important note, it was established that proposals came in lower. This year primarily the cost of reinsurance is lower for everyone. That was the, the lower cost.
Well, that's the case, cause I've had other communities tell me there's one out, but.
Both of them said that they could provide lower.
Yes.
Proposals because of the cost of reinsurance. We, we have been fortunate.
It was.
We.
No.
Okay, so let's go over to expenditure analysis. Do we have anything on that? Where is that? The next page, budget discussed decisions and next step, final budget direction, legislative priorities discussion. Um, and then adjournment. Okay, we're good, let's go on to September eighth, twenty twenty five.
Um, right at the top, it's either under minutes, it's either workshop or meeting.
Yes.
Which one?
Yes, this is their call order.
Pardon?
Out of the top order, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I think we should, we should take out a meeting.
Could be, but also, looks like we.
Was it a meeting or a workshop? Well, this, oh wait, this was our regular meeting.
Yeah. No, this was not.
Yeah, this was a, this was a workshop.
This was, we did not vote on anything, this was a workshop, but budget workshop meeting, city commissioner said.
Yeah, that's a workshop. And a workshop.
So it's correct, okay, but.
Well, that's interview, uh, by meeting, by meeting.
Well, workshop, yeah. So meetings should come out in the heading, and meetings should come out in the first line, under call order. Okay, and then under roll call, uh, the same issue after city clerk, you don't need that rest of that.
Okay, that's really take it out, keep going.
Um, I personally would put Mayor Shaw, I was at the top of those two roll call.
It's just a little.
Thank you for the floor that she asked.
Um.
Okay, good.
Okay, second page, um, down towards the bottom, there was a concern, and these really are well organized, so Commissioner DeBida questioned whether the bidding process, uh, could we please add it to the word process, had allowed.
Okay, so add had there.
So it was something in the past tense.
Okay, so let's go to the next page.
Um.
Okay.
Are we on number five, community redevelopment agency?
Yes.
Okay, so, wait, is this special meeting, regular meeting, workshop, this is workshop, okay, got it, got it.
Workshop, workshop.
Um, very last paragraph, discussion, um, last sentence, possibly by reallocating, insert the word funds from, cause we'd be taking funds from commercial redevelopment and then delete funds at the end, it's just line items.
Mm-hmm.
Or community redevelopment line item.
Okay, next page, my stomach. You've got Culver, uh, Culver Park, it says Culver.
Culver, yeah, Culver, Culver Park. Yeah.
What number is that?
That's under six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Part four seven, Culver, Culver Park.
Oh, Culver, right, right, but also, um.
That's just, for my grant, it was previously, it should be a for now, correct?
Yes, and then right above that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right above that, where it says equipment needs is not supposed to be clam track.
Yeah, it's a, it's a claw, it's a claw track, claw.
Clam, clam, clam track, yeah.
Clam.
Clam track, it is clam, yeah, okay, I have no idea.
It has a big thing on it, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's how I call it, yes. Okay, just checking.
Okay, next page. Anything on that one?
Um, under adjournment, um, as this was, it says an informational session, it was a workshop. I would just put workshop instead of informational session.
Right.
Just take out that one last sentence.
Just take the whole thing out, just take out those whole bows, okay, okay.
Little followers, yeah, that's.
Um, well, and also the part about the commission will reconvene, we don't really reconvene.
Yeah, so we're gonna take that whole area out. Okay, let's go on to September tenth.
Um, before, I have a question.
Yes.
Under here now, it starts saying city clerk signing it and, and mayor.
Right.
But before it was city manager.
City manager, and they changed it, and probably the clerk, because the clerk prepares these.
And the mayor. Uh-huh.
So I think that's why it's, and let's just check on that, but that was my understanding of because the clerk, this is the clerk's work.
I, I just know that there's a difference.
I know, and, and that we've gone to that, I think that program's probably why it's going to that, um.
Yeah.
Well.
I just know it's not, I just, but the general is correct.
So really.
Um, I guess this is a worry, this is a question.
Two people, test.
It did cha- it did change, and it was, um, so we just need to make sure.
Uh, and Mayor, if I could, it might be a charter issue because the clerk actually works for the city manager and the city manager is, under the charter, responsible for all those types of item, item.
I'm sure we didn't put that in our, I'm sure we didn't put that in our charter when we were doing that, when we made it to the clerk, I don't think the minutes came under that, so. Just, if you would check based on that, who normally signs, who's supposed to sign that? Okay, let's move on to September tenth.
Well, the second page.
Well, I have something on the first page, um, I don't think it's really necessary to say the part about the first paragraph, held jointly with the community redevelopment agency.
Yeah. Yeah.
Could we take that out, held jointly with community redevelopment agency? We don't, the mayor calls the commission meeting for that. I think that's plenty. Um.
The second page, or public comments, that's again Tyler, Denham, yeah, that's a funny thing.
Okay.
And written, um, Chief Heifel.
Yes.
Is, uh, so.
And that's.
Heifel, Heifel.
Right, and there's three.
There's three times extension, yes.
Three times, and if we could, um, going back up to the top of the page, very first line, it says twenty twenty five fall speaker series. That, right, that should be F P H S from Fruitland Peninsula Historical Society. And then down in public comments, wherever Tyler Denham is, um, I believe that should say F M I T representative.
Well, he was just, he was a personal public speaker, his only line was, well.
Okay. And we go on through these, we've got some areas in here that do not have roll calls, that, that the actual roll call and it's required um, by us to have in our public hearing section for us to do roll calls, so we just need to make sure that this, that it, that it adds those in um, matter of fact for the roll calls.
And this, it doesn't have the time of every recess for the staring.
Right.
And I don't think it has the time of the, agree.
Um.
When we agree.
So you already need to ensure regular commission, you're gonna be at September twenty, yeah.
I don't know. Okay, okay. So it just needs the time when we.
So it, it, I thought it did, did not have the time.
It just had, it just said that, it just had, it just said regularly recessed CRA session.
Okay, that sounds remarkable.
Sorry, it's missing time there. Um, I mean, next page, the fourth quarter payment, downtown partnership, this is approval of twelve thousand nine hundred dollar payment. Is it twelve thousand five hundred dollars?
I believe so, yeah.
Cause it's three thousand.
Yeah, yes.
I was like, yeah.
Anything else? If not, we'll move on to the September twenty fifth meeting. Um, this one we had, we don't have where we extended this meeting. So we need that motion to extend this meeting.
Wait a minute, ma'am?
Yes.
Um. If you go, wait, are you already on the next meeting?
I, I've gone back, what do you need, Commissioner DeBida, on this?
Okay, whatever it is, underneath on the page where we just changed the fourth quarter payment for the downtown partnership, huh?
That would be under the CRA.
Okay, under the CRA, said we were making adjustments due to county rollback rate adoption. Shouldn't that say millage rollback rate adoption?
Um, adjustments due to county millage, yes, okay, so.
Millage rollback rate adoption.
Rollback rate adoption, okay.
And then I believe we had amendments. It says amendments, but it doesn't say who moved and seconded them to change.
Yes.
Um, this, cause this was a motion, so we got a budget.
This, this is a, a reserve.
Right.
Budget.
Exactly, so.
Who did the motion?
Motion. Right, so who did the motions for the amendments? Okay.
So, maybe.
Okay, so we're, and under business items, it says vintage market application. Okay, it says a motion for, sorry, that, that, you know, we were saying the motion should be stated as it is, it's, we're not doing that. Um. It's, it's, um, I have a question about the utility on the next page. Utility service contract one hundred and thirty one thousand, seven thirty two for Lake Street Cypress Avenue four.
Yeah, I didn't know that much.
What is that? Is that the water tower?
That's the water tower, and if you ask for the tree detection clause to be placed into it.
That is the water tower.
So that contract for the, um, water tower, or, or, right.
That was what I was thinking.
Can we just put water tower at Lake Street Cypress Avenue?
Yeah, but it's gonna, it's gonna paint the water tower.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, and then also, um, just under public hearings, we had the resolution twenty twenty five oh five N I S T Cypress Security Framework. Is that something required by state law?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it says adopted per, um, FS two eighty two, um. Okay, you could at least say Florida statutes.
Yeah.
Or required by Florida statutes.
It just adopted by Florida statute, it's required by Florida statute, that speaks for itself, so Florida statute.
Okay.
So just spell it out, Florida statute. Um, roll call, if we go over here on the next page, I think, um, again, it's got the resolution twenty twenty five dash oh six.
Right.
Um, who made the motion, there, there was a first motion that failed two to three, but we need to know who made the motion and who made the second motion that passed, and I think anytime we put in there, if we, if everyone's okay with this, where it says eight point seven one six four mils, that's a rollback rate, the rollback based on rollback eight point seven one six four. Just so it's noted that that was the rollback for anybody looking at that.
It says rollback rate.
It does. Um, no, I know when you go, when you go further down, when you go for adopted total budget based on eight point seven four six four, that's where I think we should go.
Oh, yes, well, right, right.
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay.
Okay, and then actually, I have, I guess I voted for it, that says I made the motion for the total city budget, okay.
That's fine, um. And then, um, again, the motion for, um, extension of time and who did the, um, adjournment?
Okay.
Okay, and then September twenty fifth, guys, we're on the last, we're on the last one. Um.
And then roll call, has the county sheriff's office attorney, chart, and he is regional council.
Yes.
So. I'm not just.
So we just put general counsel, okay.
Right, and then after, um, Keith Harris's name, I think we can take out and arrive in later. We can change it, what did we call him, Kate? Is that his name?
Okay, anything on the second page?
Um, well, on the first page, under community events, the bullet, um, I don't think that that's exactly what she said, Rotary members were present selling tickets, we weren't really here selling tickets for swine line.
Okay, Rotary members are selling tickets, how about that? Are selling, how's that?
Yes.
Selling tickets for swine line, perfect.
Thank you.
And second page?
Uh, under listing, it says, that Mayor Myers can find the city as a bonus for income tax, leaving parks under section two oh four, two of municipal code. And as officials, that's out of summer, okay.
Yeah.
Um, now, just take out the section, we'll.
Yeah.
Right.
So, saving marks, I think, under municipal code, okay, I don't know that section.
Okay. Okay, anybody else on that page?
Twenty forty two, um, wait a minute, yes, under ordinance twenty twenty five ten, the budget amendment. Um.
I do?
I don't really understand. I don't understand that what it says an unfavorable variance, what, what does that mean?
Yeah.
I don't understand what any of that is trying to convey. I, I think we probably should take all that out. Despite certain deficit presentations, the general fund reflects a two hundred nineteen surplus with an unfavorable variance of twenty eight thousand.
Yeah.
Resulting in favorable surplus.
Doesn't make any sense.
That doesn't, I just think that this is the, this is the second and final reading.
Yeah.
Uh, ordinance twenty twenty five, and that's all that it needs to be on air, so.
Um, do we need to say that it's second reading?
Yes.
Sometimes Derek starts to talk completely through this thing.
Did not say this, or?
You may, they were.
What may now, so be very theory, be very theory.
Okay, yeah, I know.
Okay, yeah, anything else on, on?
Sorry, I just.
Anything else to come on?
Just my question was, did I, did I vote for this? I have no idea. It's, does, it's the budget amendment?
Is budget amendment. Is budget amendment, you, I believe you did vote for, you did not vote for the rollback, um, and I don't, I don't believe you voted for the budget, the actual final budget either.
Okay. Right. I don't think I did.
You did not, you voted against it, um.
Oh, I, you know, when I apologize, the language that's in here is correct, I was reading based on the budget amendment, so it i- it is actually factually correct.
Okay.
It was just confusing, and it just can, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't help me. Okay, so yeah, so it's just confusing, so let's take that out, let's go to, um, reschedule amendment. Anything on that? Again, I would, if we could, down here where it says ordinance twenty twenty five final budget adoption, um, setting the millage levy at, um, eight point, at rollback. Eight point seven one six four.
You want to say rollback rate?
Yeah.
Rate, uh.
Because what we did prior.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that one?
Well, should it say second, somewhere special?
That it does say moved on approval on second reading, okay, we got a second reading in there.
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, the next one would be sexual offender ordinance. Do we have anything else on this?
I don't think so.
No, this actually is in the description of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
On that other thing.
Right.
Yep.
I'm good with all of this on that page. Is everyone good with the next page? We're pulling in for a landing, guys. I think everything on that one, I didn't have anything, did you?
At the very bottom, I have just on the invoice from my lawyer, it's Chris Roper, K R I Z N E R.
Yeah. I Z N E R, okay. Um, and this was a, um, this was a reimbursement, and incorrect, so move to reimburse.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Laurie, for invoice.
Last time.
Okay, and then we've got adjournment, we need an extension, we had to have an extension on this one. Um, as well, because we went to ten twenty.
Okay, well, ma'am, besides the extensions under nine procedural corrections.
Uh huh.
Didn't we have to rescind?
Yeah.
The prior, didn't we have specific votes rescinding our?
Yeah, I'm just recommending I can reconsider. Which is, so we're going to afford to make motion to reconsider it.
Um, I think it was.
Reconsider it, maybe an passing, as the word could say.
Right, but it doesn't say.
Readopted, it says readopted, so I don't know if a lot of them, if the commission readopted the following emergency ordinance.
I think we had to rescind them, and then we had to declare an emergency.
Okay, so let's, let's just check on that, we actually did the first vote, if we did the votes.
Cause we didn't.
I'm not sure we did the votes.
Should we reconsider?
I think we, yes. I thi- I think there was at least one additional set of motions, and then for the ones that we adopted. It doesn't say here who made the motion in the second for either two, twenty twenty five, ten, eleven, or nine.
Something's.
Right. And then, mayor, don't you need to have a roll call for those?
Yes.
What does?
And she, she kind of, it kind of adds it because it has who, who voted, but we actually need a roll call.
Right. Right.
Yeah, for that. Okay, anything else? And then, or like, like I said, the motion took stand. Okay, anything else?
So, we've now rescinded our.
Yes.
So now we need a motion to approve.
We need a motion to approve, um.
All of these.
All of these, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Right, um, Madam Mayor, I would, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes, um, special meeting February twenty fifth, the regular C R A meeting March thirteenth. Special meeting March twenty first, special meeting March twenty eighth, the special meeting April eighth, the regular C R A meeting April tenth, special meeting April twenty first, the special meeting April twenty second. The regular meeting May eighth, the workshop May nineteenth, special meeting May twenty seventh, the workshop June eleventh, the regular meeting June twelfth, the regular meeting June, or July the tenth. The major workshop, special meeting July twenty first, the major workshop July twenty, twenty first, the special meeting August fifth, the regular and C R A meeting August twelfth. The major workshop August nineteenth, the regular workshop August twenty eighth, major workshop on September eighth, the C R A meeting, the regular C R A meeting September tenth, and the special meeting September twenty fifth.
Okay, second, that has a proper motion, and second, commissioner, do you have any further discussion on this?
I don't know. I don't.
I don't, we are not, we didn't remember, and we want.
Wait, did he say?
Still being recorded, he said, um, absolutely no.
Did he say, what, did he say, or did he?
Really, I heard.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure he said it, he said absolutely no.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, madam clerk, can you do a roll call for us, please?
Commissioner DeVita?
Aye.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye, okay, so approved. Madam clerk, thank you so much.
That was a lot of work.
That was a lot of work.
In a short period of time.
And we greatly appreciate it.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Um, commissioners, I'm going to ask for you, if you could get your, um, evaluations to the clerk as soon as you can, so we'll have those prior to the meeting. So we can have those, um, graded prior to the meeting. And. And is there anything else that anybody has?
Yeah. Yes, mayor, I have.
Okay, I'm going to have to excuse myself, um.
I have one item, um, it's a request for, for funding, um, we have a couple of, uh, meters, readers that are out, the actual, uh, the actual cell. And those are about two hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, a piece, um, they come in ten, uh, packs, so it's about twenty two hundred, uh, about twenty two hundred and fifty dollars. Keith has to order those, and, and in order to get those fixed, we're going to order ten with approval now, and I need to get another ten after the holidays are completed. This is something that, that is done every single year to make sure we maintain quality in our infrastructure. Um, I've given you all the account that it'll come out of, and, which is operating supplies within the water distribution fund. We budgeted fifty thousand dollars, of course, we haven't spent anything out of that as of yet, this F Y, and that is on this paper here.
Okay, so what I see is, um, it says amount budgeted fifty thousand dollars, remaining fifty thousand dollars, so we haven't spent anything yet from this line item.
Yes, mayor.
This would normally come from this line item.
Yes, mayor.
Do we normally approve these kind of purchases?
Well, it is over a thousand dollars.
Um, I think there's an exception for any operation in the department, we need to clarify what that means, but anyway, um, so, and you're saying we buy these every year?
Every year they're needed.
Yes.
Do we buy them?
He does buy them, and, and, and I'm, and there is no pri- price break, so I'm telling him to go ahead and let's get ten now, and after the holidays, we'll get ten more.
Okay.
Moving into the, to the, uh, uh, spring season, we'll see if we need any more, and most likely we will.
Okay. So how many do you want us to approve now?
Total today, ten, and then also approving ten for after the holiday, so twenty total.
Okay, twenty five, so.
At two hundred.
Does anybody else need to have a motion, finding that this is an emergency purchase?
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we do.
It's operational, I mean, it was just.
You have to be careful, if we do this, and if we do this, and this is operational, if it's operational, that puts a precedent.
Okay.
So let's be very careful, so if we determine it's operational, then you need a motion basically to state that's an operational expense. And should be covered under the city manager and the, um, operations within that department, and not necessarily an emergency, because if you do it that way, you set a precedent.
Okay.
Okay, is that not, I so apologize, I have, um, some.
Go ahead.
I'm late.
Go ahead.
Bye, thank you, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, mayor.
So, Commissioner Laurie, are you ready to motion?
I'm ready to motion.
Okay, so, I move that we approve the requests for operating supplies from, this is public works budget?
It's under the water distribution funds.
Okay, so that we, I move that we approve the request for operational supplies from the water distribution. Funds in the amount of, what does that make it, five thousand five hundred dollars for purchase of a total of twenty. What are they?
Water readers.
Water, are they water, the readers?
It'd be, it'd be four, four thousand five hundred, no, it's four thousand.
Oh, four, I'm sorry, in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars, for, what is the name of the item?
Uh, we, you could just call them meters, they're going to be the meter reads, the digital portion of the meter.
Okay, for the meter reads, um, and that's it?
Thank you, second.
I think.
Um, is there anything special? Seeing, um, um, all in favor, all in favor, please everybody say aye.
Aye.
All.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, sorry, first say aye, uh, motion passed, thank you.
Um.
Is there any further assistance to be brought before the audience's time?
Yes.
Seeing, um.
I have one item, and this quick, and we don't need to make a decision, um, we have heard, uh, I just want to bring this up as something to possibly put on the agenda for, um.
Yes.
Either one of our special meetings or in December, we heard from Chief Razor that our, um, fire department staff has, have had some very difficult calls. That have resulted in, um, I guess, um, possible mental health difficulties, or that are, just have been very challenging, and as well. Uh, I think we learned from our city manager that some of our public work staff, um, in addressing the aftermath of emergencies. Have also been subjected to very challenging circumstances, and I am hoping that we will consider, um, recognizing, thanking them either. With, um, a certificate or a letter of accommodation for the staff that have had to be exposed to those very difficult circumstances.
And I was going to bring it up to you all, um, and ask if it was okay if I did a, a certificate of, of appreciation from management, if you all wanted to do something further accommodating them, uh, up here in public, that would be something.
Right.
That, that you all can certainly pursue.
And I'm not asking for a decision, I'm just saying, can we put this on the agenda?
Yeah. Yeah.
My, my feeling is also, we don't want to make it too much of a, I don't know, public recognition, some, if they're still going through, we don't want to put them on display.
Correct, correct.
Um, I, maybe a letter of combination, or something just private.
Do the letter.
Yeah, yeah.
Do, that, I think that's.
Some, or, and even this stupid appreciation, I think might sound a little corny.
Yeah.
I would rather a letter.
I mean, yeah, just something for meritorious service, or just for going around the beyond.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I'm, I'm, my feeling is just shy of it from the public, right.
You know, while, while we had talked about it, Chief Razor and myself, they know that this is what they signed up for, this is their work, but just so you all know.
Yes.
Um, in two weeks, above and beyond the normal call, uh, they had a motor vehicle crash with a trauma alert. Um, Razor and Demiduk came on that scene, and Eric, they had a pediatric cardiac arrest, um, they responded, Captain Pope responded, Pope responded alone. And was doing CPR alone for a period of time, trying to keep that person, um, alive. They had a second pediatric trauma cardiac arrest, uh, in South, Captain McClair, Eric Smith were by themselves for fifteen minutes, or ten to fifteen minutes. Um, before further help arrived, and then we had a unfortunate suicide by gunshot that Chief Razor and McClair went to. We had a first stabbing on the north end, I forgot the name, but it's outside of Crescent City, but they respond to that, um, and that was actually Razor and McClair. Uh, or I'm sorry, that was, uh, McClair, Eric Smith, and Kate Eisen, which is a new, uh, volunteer. Uh, second stabbing, we had, and this was outside city proper, but they, uh, they responded, was Captain Pope, or Captain Pope, Captain Demiduk, and Eric Smith, and then we had a second. Uh, unfortunate suicide by gunshot, that was Demiduk, Eric Smith, and public works personnel. So, and that's all happened just in one, it's two weeks, and, and that's a lot for everybody, so definitely want to do something for them.
Yeah.
And we can discuss that, I can put together a letter that can be routed and signed by everybody?
I think, my feeling is that's probably most appropriate.
Okay, okay.
Send it out, they, you know, file, and just something to recognize and take that for merit.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, because that's just, I mean, just listening to you talk about it, just.
It was.
Wasn't there, uh, an ATV, um, accident?
That was the first cardiac, because, or accident, trauma, yes, yes.
Which resulted in death.
Yes, it did.
Right, so, and I just, it's mayor, I think, I was, I was mayor, um, just, um, I, I agree with, um, Vice Mayor Laurie that. It should be short and sweet, and avoid any mention of any distressing individual circumstances, because they've been distressed enough.
Yeah.
Just a, a letter of appreciation for something like above and beyond, and being meeting extraordinary circumstances.
And, anything else?
I have nothing.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I move that we adjourn.
Yes, second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
All right, aye.
Any adjourn?
And I miss my capital I. Thank you very much, Mr. Ford.
All right, my turn.
And I.